Let us pray. Eternal God, Heavenly Father, Creator of all, we ask that your blessings be upon this time and this moment as we gather to conduct business. We pray that you bless our mayor, bless our vice mayor, bless our city manager, and bless all those who come with the intention of making our city better. We ask for your vision, your wisdom, and guidance and strength in this moment, and we pray that you bless our city. In Jesus's name, amen.
Mr. Clerk, call the roll. Ms. Graves?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. McClellan?
Here.
Mr. Riddick?
Here.
Mr. Smigel?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Alexander?
Here. Motion to excuse Dr. Whibley?
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. The motion is to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. Mr. Clerk, will you please read the resolution for the closed meeting?
The resolution certifying a closed meeting of the council of the city of Norfolk held in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, adopt the resolution. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Norfolk City Council Chamber. For the benefit of those who don't regularly attend the council formal sessions, the process that will follow tonight is to first take up ceremonial items. Next, we'll move into our public hearings, and then on to our agenda items in order as they appear on the docket. Upon completion of our regular agenda, we will then open the floor for new business to come before the council. To address the council, you should have registered with the clerk outside of the council chamber before 7:00 P.M. There are no ceremonial items tonight, so we'll move directly into the public hearings.
Public hearing one scheduled for this day to hear comments on approving the conveyance of a portion of the Curly Drive right away to the Virginia Department of Transportation by deed of quitclaim.
Mr. Clerk, there's not anyone here to speak on public hearing number one. Call for the vote.
I have an ordinance approving the conveyance of a portion of the Curly Drive right away to the Virginia Department of Transportation by deed of quitclaim, dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. Public hearing number two?
Public hearing two scheduled for this day to hear comments on the conveyance to Hoffler Architects LLC of certain parcels of property at 2935 and 2939 East Virginia Beach Boulevard for the total sum of $25,000 in accordance with the terms and conditions of the purchase and sale agreement.
No one's registered to speak. Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
An ordinance authorizing the conveyance to Hoffler Architects LLC of certain parcels of property at 2935 and 2939 East Virginia Beach Boulevard for the total sum of $25,000 in accordance with the terms and conditions of the purchase and sale agreement, dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
I have to abstain from this one. He's my client.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. PH three?
Public hearing three scheduled for this day on the application of Sun Station Realty LLC for a zoning text amendment to Section 27-27 Rivers Edge at Berkeley Residential Plan Development District of the zoning ordinance to create new development standards for residential plan development on the property, and by five zero vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. RJ Nutter and John Hines are both here. To answer any questions, please state your name, your address, and please limit your remarks to three minutes if you so desire to make a comment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, for the record, my name is RJ Nutter. I'm an attorney. My address is 222 Central Park Avenue in Virginia Beach. I'm here to answer any questions you might have. It's a pleasure to be here with the support of the community. We've worked very hard for that. And there's another speaker, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jennings from the Civic League has come to speak in support as well, even though you have the letters in support. He wanted to be here personally to support the application. So I'm happy to answer any questions you or the other members might have, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nutter. We have Herbert Ballard, Sr., 130 Bellamy Avenue. Mr. Ballard, are you here?
Yes, sir.
All right. Would you like to speak or just wanted to be acknowledged? All right. Okay. John Hines? Do you want to? Okay. All right. Mike Ash? Any question? Good to see you. And Ronnie Jennings? You good? Do you want to speak, sir?
Yes, sir.
Please come forward.
Good evening, City Council.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, City Council.
Please come closer to the mic so I can hear you, Ms. Jennings.
My name is Ronnie Jennings. I'm at 1625 Colton Avenue, Norfolk, and with the Beep and Light Civic League. I just think that this project would be great for the Berkeley area. I've talked to Mr. Nutter and the attorney and his associates, and I think that would bring a tax base to us because, you know, in this area, under the Davis-Bican Act, we are living under poverty. And the only thing that we're trying to do to bring this area and this community back to its normal living, and I just think it would be so good for us if you could see fit to allow this. And I just wanted to say that I think it would be great for the Berkeley area. Thank you very much.
Mr. Riddick?
Yeah. I was excited about this five years ago, six years ago, seven years ago, and it sort of went away. But I was extremely excited when it came back and the fact that this development is going to be market-rich. It's an extremely well put-together project. And what it says to me is that it's recognized that the South Side is a viable part of the community. Now, what I will say, I was asked to Mr. Jennings earlier at the South Side Task Force meeting. One of the concerns is the fact that, and Mr. Nutter and his group have already said that they were going to use, you know, local labor. And this is one thing that we missed a vote on when it came to building these five schools. The community was drastically overlooked. But I support this project. I think it's a great project, and I just wish them all the success in the world with it.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Mr. Jennings.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Clerk?
I have an ordinance to amend Section 27-27 of the zoning ordinance of the city of Norfolk, 1992, so as to revise the plan of development for the Rivers Edge at Berkeley Residential Plan Development District. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. PH four?
Public hearing four is scheduled for this day on the application of Norfolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority for a change of zoning from R-12 Medium Density Multifamily and Bayfront Residential Parking Overlay District to C-3 Retail Center on the 10-foot rear portion of properties located at 9548 through 9574 21st Bay Street, and by five zero vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
Thank you. Jim Hallman? Any? He's good? Okay. All right. I think we're in good shape. Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
I have an ordinance to rezone a portion of the property located at 9548 to 9574 21st Bay Street from R-12 and BFRPO to C-3. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Tell me about this.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, the owner of the shopping center who's here, has invested quite a bit of money in renovating the shopping center, and it's attracted some new retail. And their Dollar Tree is leasing a large portion of the space. In order to do that, they need a loading dock in the back. The property that's behind that is owned by the NRHA, and the property, I believe, goes 150 feet. And so they've sold 10 feet of that to Mr. Mayor. Originally, it was just going to be one portion, but the Planning Commission delayed it and asked that they consider just giving the whole strip because then it would have made all the parcels of the land awkward next to it.
Okay. You all right with it?
Yeah. And Civic League supports it as well.
Okay. I vote aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Thank you for asking. Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. All right. R-two. R-one, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
R-one.
R-one is an ordinance requesting the Virginia Department of Transportation to establish projects for the West Ocean View Flyover, the citywide ADA ramp construction phase three, and the Granby Street Bayview Boulevard intersection improvements in accordance with the Programmatic Project Administration Agreement between the city and DDOT, and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of $3,540,000 for the project, subject to and in accordance with the terms of the aforementioned agreement.
Mr. Clerk, no one has registered to speak?
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
I wanted to just make one quick comment. I asked for this to be continued last time. I thank you to my fellow council members. We had a community meeting the day after, and while not everybody is excited about this possibility of an at-grade intersection, I think the community understands it. And I would just encourage that we ensure that we have the right signalization so that we don't have, we can mitigate the backups at Fourth View. So thank you, and I vote aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. R-two?
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment with alcoholic beverages known as Collector Norfolk on property located at 2409 Fawn Street, and by five zero vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, I look, I think, I look at this property, and I remember when the Fawn Market wanted to sell Virginia wine, and it was a very contentious proposal. And I just want to make sure that Faith Deliverance Christian Center, I like to hold it to make sure that Faith Deliverance Christian Center, the Presbyterian Church, and there's another little smaller church right on the corner of 26 and Fawn, that they have an opportunity to come in and, you know, talk about it.
So, Mr. Clerk, the motion is to continue to a date specific?
Yes.
We can continue it to October 11, Mr. Mayor.
And then we can make sure George and Planning get in touch with Faith Deliverance Christian Center, the Presbyterian Church on 29th and Fawn, and then there's another church on 26 and Fawn.
All right. Now, Ron Meadows is here to answer any questions. You good with that?
May I?
Yes, please. Come on, please. Welcome.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I appreciate being here. The third church you're referring to is the Herald of His Coming on 26 and Fawn.
Right.
And actually, that is the church that we've developed a relationship with to do all the parking for our events. And so we just met with the pastor a few days ago about that, and they're going to let us use the parking lot for events there. So if you guys have any questions at all or anything, I can kind of help shed some light on. I'd be glad to answer anything.
As long as we can get those other two churches to come in, and the one that you're talking about is going to be closest to you. And so it seems like when you come back in October, if they're all right with it, then the other two might. But I want to just make sure they have an opportunity to have an opinion on it.
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Johnson?
Have you had an opportunity to discuss it with the Civic League?
Yes, we have. Villa Heights, the Civic League bias, and there's an email. I'm not sure if it's in these notes, but they gave approval to it, and we're excited about it.
Thank you, sir. So the motion is to continue?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Mr. Clerk?
Continue October 11. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
My only concern here is was there not notification provided to the churches based on their proximity initially, and they just didn't respond? Because if they were notified and they didn't respond, I will take that as not an issue.
Ms. McClellan, I apologize. And Mr. Tahan and I have just been talking about one of the process improvements we're going to make starting your next meeting. We're going to give you a list of who got, who received mailed notification. I can't answer that question. I do not know if we mailed notice to either of the churches that Mr. Riddick mentioned.
If they were within 100 feet, they would have received it automatically.
They're not within 100 feet.
Okay. So they wouldn't?
Almost certainly, we did not mail notice to them.
Okay. Thank you. I just, for future reference, I think that that would be helpful to know. So I vote aye for the continuance.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
Thank you.
R-three?
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment with alcoholic beverages known as Borjo Coffee House on property located at 4416 Monarch Way, and by five zero vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
All right. Greg Hartman is here to answer any questions. All right. Mr. Clerk?
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
I'm glad to vote for this, but who's from the Borjo House? They have great milkshakes. Oh, you're here for R-five? Is there anybody here for this? No? Well, they have great milkshakes anyway. But I vote aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Wow, are they underwriting tonight's city council meeting? I like them too. Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
She'll get them to serve dinner to us one time, too, probably.
At least milkshakes.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
All right. R-five? For, Mr. President. An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an eating and drinking establishment named Clementine's on property located at 110 Lavellette Avenue, Suite C, by five zero vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
All right. Mr. Clerk?
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. Now, R-five?
Yes, sir. An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an eating and drinking establishment named Exception Ale on property located at 2,000 Colonial Avenue, Suite 6, by five zero vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
There is no opposition, Mr. Clerk?
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
I don't think they have milkshakes there, but I still vote aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. R-six?
An ordinance accepting an easement from Lake Bright Retail Investors LLC for the purpose of constructing and maintaining a public sidewalk and authorizing the city manager to execute the deed of easement on behalf of the city.
Stephen is here to answer any questions. There is no opposition.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. R-seven?
An ordinance dedicating certain property owned by the city as public right-of-way in connection with the Military Highway Continuous Flow Intersection Project. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. R-eight?
An ordinance approving a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise agreement with Mobile Mobility LLC.
Mr. Clerk, there's a motion to continue and to a date specific. To October 11th, is that? Ms. Johnson, and you're to Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
What was the reason for continuing?
Ms. Johnson?
We wanted, I wanted more clarity and a presentation on exactly what this fully means.
I don't think there's any big rush, but the change is just one sentence in Section 1 that clarifies that the franchise can sublease, that it's no problem continuing it, but I'll leave that with you.
Continue it.
Okay. Mr. Clerk?
Okay. Continue to October 11. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Just sometimes there's items that come up on our agenda that we find out things, and we do continue it. But just as a courtesy, council members, if you have items that you wish to be continued, if we can know in advance a reason why, it sounds like that other people know that continuations are happening, but we're not being told until we get up here about it. So just out of respect to us, if we can do that. I know, like I said, sometimes stuff does come up while we're talking, and we have to delay that, but just if there's something, just let us know, please. Thank you. Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
R-nine?
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a right-of-entry agreement with Richard C. Hood and Sharon S. Smith regarding the property located at 1432 Gates Avenue in connection with the Jeff Robertson Park Stormwater Wetland Project.
Clerk, there's no one here to oppose?
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. R-ten?
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a right-of-entry agreement with the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Transportation and Corbin E.B. Williams, a joint venture for work related to the Virginia Department of Transportation Military Highway Continuous Flow Intersection Project. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. R-eleven?
An ordinance to amend and reordain Sections 25-653, 654, and 656 of the Norfolk City Code 1979, so as to add three new yield intersections, six new stop intersections, and three new streets included in the prohibition regarding trucks of one and one-half tons. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye. R-12?
An ordinance finding a public necessity for the acquisition and fee simple of the property interest owned by Joshua Pretlow, Jr., and Pretlow Henderson, T. Kirk Pretlow, and Jenny Pretlow Barrett and certain property located in the city of Suffolk and certain property located in the city of Suffolk at the Western Branch Reservoir, approving the purchase and sales agreement and authorizing the expenditure of a sum of up to $256,000 from funds heretofore appropriated for acquisition of the property and all related transactional costs. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
I'm a little confused by this. Is this property we're buying or selling in Suffolk?
The Utilities Department recommended its purchase for the protection of water resources in Suffolk.
Okay.
We'd be buying.
Okay, all right, aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R13?
An ordinance granting Berman Realty LLC permission to encroach into the right-of-way at 1316 Colley Avenue approximately 386 square feet for the purpose of outdoor dining and approving the terms and conditions of the encroachment agreement. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R14?
An ordinance granting SLNWC Office Company LLC permission to encroach into the rights-of-way of Monticello Avenue and Charlotte Street at 440 Monticello Avenue approximately 37 square feet for the purpose of outdoor dining and approving the terms and conditions of the encroachment agreement.
Thank you. Stephen Lemine is here to answer any questions. There is no opposition. Mr. Clerk?
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R16?
An ordinance approving a temporary right-of-entry agreement with Selco Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless granting permission across a portion of city-owned property at 723 Spotswood Avenue for the purpose of installing and maintaining an aerial fiber route and antennas on an existing power pole. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R17?
R16, Mr. President.
I'm sorry, R16?
An ordinance authorizing an amendment to a lease between the Virginia Stage Company and the city for property located at 220 Bush Street and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement of the amendment on behalf of the city. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R17?
An ordinance approving the acceptance of the Norfolk Drug Treatment Court Grant Award of $250,000 from the Supreme Court of Virginia for the Adult Drug Court program and program fees up to $15,000 and appropriating the grant funds and program fees and authorizing the expenditure of $78,500 from previously appropriated funds as a local cash match. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R18?
An ordinance accepting $348,950 from the Stormwater Local Assistance Fund Grant for the implementation of flood reduction and environmental sustainability and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of said amount and $348,950 in matching funds for the Ann Newton Pond retrofit water quality improvement project.
All right, Ellis W. James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council. Mr. Jones? I'd like to just make it for the record that a taxpayer is in support of this item because this is one more step in the direction that we are proceeding down that road to try to deal with our stormwater problems and so on. And I think this is going to be another one of those projects that certainly citizens in Norfolk, especially if you're on the NEC, ought to be in support of. I would urge the council to vote unanimously in support of this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome, Mr. James. Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R19?
An ordinance accepting a victim-witness grant award of $715,553 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services for the continuation of the FY17 Victim Witness Assistance Program, appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of the grant funds and authorizing the employment of 13 persons in a special project employment status.
Welcome, Mr. James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Ellis W. James. I reside at 2021 Kenlake Place here in the city of Norfolk. Once again, this issue is before us, and it is an extremely important one given the problems that we have in our community and the problems that spill over from the peninsula side and impact our area also. Witness assistance is the one thing that can help us bridge the gap between our police department and our officers, both the men and the women who so importantly patrol our streets and try to make our neighborhoods safe. And being able to have funding for those persons who are willing to step forward and do the right thing as a citizen is extremely important. And I would urge that you all vote unanimously in support of this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Betsy Powell is here to answer any questions. If we have any questions, Betsy, good seeing you. No opposition. Mr. Clerk, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. McClellan?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Alexander?
Aye.
R20?
An ordinance accepting $5,000 in grant funds from the Virginia Commission for the Arts, appropriating and authorizing the funds and authorizing the expenditure of $5,000 in local cash matching funds for distribution on a competitive basis to local arts organizations.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We have two, Deborah Burrell and Terrence Alfred Anderson. Both, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and Mr. Jones. My name is Terrence Alfred Anderson, and I didn't bring any milkshakes this evening. But I live at 1210 Clonie 11, apartment number 1206 in Norfolk, Virginia. And I am a commissioner on the Norfolk Commission on the Arts and Humanities. On behalf of the commission and the citizens of Norfolk, we wanted to take a moment to thank the council and the city of Norfolk for its deep and exemplary support of the arts and culture in Norfolk. No other city in Virginia offers the level of art that Norfolk enjoys. The allocation from the general fund, as well as this grant, will allow the commission to help support the 30 arts organizations that provide art to every neighborhood in the city of Norfolk. And we just wanted to take a moment to say thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
And I'm just here to answer questions.
I think we're in good shape. Thank you both for what you do for the arts.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk?